Thank you. Good morning. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Sustainability and Renters Rights Committee of the Seattle City Council. Today is Friday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is nine thirty a.m. I am the Chair of the Committee, Councilmember Kshama Sawant, with the Clerk Ted Verdon from my office. Please call the role.
Councilmember Sawant.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Juarez.
Ted, I believe that's El Presidente Juarez, so.
Dante Juarez.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Bye, present.
Thank you, Ted, and welcome and good morning to all members of the committee. Today's committee has one point on the agenda to hear a briefing from community renters' rights organizations advocating for new legislation that would limit the late fees landlords can charge for overdue rent. My office supports this legislation and has asked Asha Venkataraman from Council Central Staff to prepare it. Given the workload of the City Attorney's Office, whose time is required to review any new legislation, Asha has estimated that the committee should be able to consider a draft in mid to late February. Today's discussion is intended to give members of the Sustainability and Rental Rights Committee and members of the public an overview of the concept of legislation capping late fees and why renters need it. Without caps on late fees, renters can be trapped in a cycle of debt by overdue rent worse than the most predatory credit cards. Some cities in Washington State already limit late fees in different ways, so we do have precedents to compare with, along with potential pitfalls to avoid. I know today's presenters will describe these in detail. My office supports capping late fees at ten dollars a month, as has been done in Auburn, which is the best model currently in Washington State. And we, of course, support closing loopholes like notice delivery fees, which we will hear more about from the presenters. Before we begin that agenda item, we will hear public comment. Ted, how many people do we have signed up for public comment?
There are three speakers remote and one in council chambers.
Speakers will have two minutes each. Ted will read out the names of the speakers in order of signing up for people. For people speaking remotely, when I call, when Ted calls your name, you will be prompted to unmute yourself. And when you hear that, you should please hit star six on your phone to unmute yourself and begin. Ted, let's begin with the first speaker.
You can start with Carolyn Malone, followed by our remote speakers in order, Angie Gerard, Aiden Nardone, and Howard Gale.
Go ahead. Ted, Ted, can you pick? Oh.
I'm Carolyn Malone. I've been here many times before because daily I live in a housing limbo and threats of eviction from Ina Whitaker, Catholic Community Services Executive Director, because I will not submit to RealPage compliance. It's an algorithm that allows landlords to charge any amount of rent. And this rent, my rent, I've given you a copy. I'm charged with. Please don't cause my stomach to quiver. My rent payment due is nine thousand fifty dollars. I pay HUD subsidized rent legally of three hundred twenty-five dollars a month, but I'm not given credit for it on this bill because Ina Whitaker is trying to force me into the RealPage algorithm, whereas rent, she can determine arbitrarily what I must pay. And the more I protest, the higher my rent goes. The market value for my one-bedroom apartment is one thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars. I'm charged or extorted for that whole amount, which is about eighty percent of my income. I've submitted paperwork and copies of a person who pays only three dollars a month, and that three dollars is a credit. So basically, I do believe I'm the only one charged with full market value because I come to city council and protest. Other renters pay fifteen dollars a month or three dollars. This is illegal and must stop. I will continue to fight against it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angie Gerald, followed by Aiden Nardone.
Good morning. My name is Angie, and I'm a small landlord in Ballard and a member of Seattle Grassroots Landlords. As you begin discussing new legislation for the year, I'm here to remind you that you have passed an unprecedented flurry of regulations in recent years with broad new social obligations and major new risks for even the smallest rental property owners. A resulting impact is that Seattle is losing small rental housing, and it's becoming more expensive. The number and diversity of options is dwindling. Barriers to small-scale ownership have skyrocketed. The Rio data for registered rental units is available through the city's open data portal. I check it once a month or so. Do you? Small housing providers are all in the Rio database. More than four thousand of us responded to a survey back in two thousand and eighteen. We are easy to reach out to. Will you? As elected leaders, it has been your choice to not include small housing provider perspectives in presentations or deliberations, with one exception that came from outside this committee. Last year, council did prompt SDCI to conduct a small landlord stakeholder group, and the report was issued in December. Have you read it? When small landlords have called in for public comment, this committee chair and some of her presenters have gone out of their way to disparage and ostracize housing provider input, while providing no means to engage in actual dialogue. For a city that desperately needs more housing, this approach is not working well. If you talk to small landlords, you will get an earful of pitfalls, confusion, protective measures, and exit strategies. Trust me, it's worth listening. Is city council interested in local independent rental housing as part of our ecosystem? In a diversity of viable rental housing types, not just one-bedroom corporate-owned apartments? The narrative doesn't have to continue as a false choice between capitulating to corporate landlords or empowering tenants. Enabling and encouraging more Seattleites to rent housing to one another should be an integral part of our housing strategy, and it needs to be considered as a regular lens in your legislative actions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Aiden Nardone.
Good morning. My name is Aiden Nardone. I'm a resident in D six. I'm confused. Citizens utilize the public comment period as one vehicle to communicate with the city council about many things, including proposed legislation. How would a citizen be able to comment about this proposed rent overdue, fees on overdue rent without any proposed legislation presented? I checked the websites of the two presenters, and there was no information there either. Today's meeting is a waste of time if you don't have the legislation ready to present. You should have canceled the meeting. We'll wait until February to see what the plan is. This is incredibly poor planning.
The final speaker is Howard Gale.
Good morning. Howard Gale, District Seven renter, speaking about the increasingly widespread practice by landlords and developers, who, with the cooperation of SDCI, now avoid Seattle laws limiting evictions and rental increases. Over this last year, landlords and developers, like Cadence Realty that famously displays Section Eight tenants from the Chateau on Capitol Hill, have discovered a way to evict people and exorbitantly raise rents without having to provide the hundred-to-eighty-day notice and avoid almost all tenant relocation assistance. All a property owner need do is claim they are doing renovations that supposedly cost over six thousand dollars. This is a simple requirement when a developer can have one of its LLCs purchase kitchen cabinets for a few hundred dollars and then have their other LLCs pay six thousand and one dollars to repurchase and install them. In my building with forty-eight apartments, Cadence Realty is doing this so as to force people out without paying most people any relocation fee and then raise rents by seventy percent, seventy percent. As an added bonus for Cadence, for the very few tenants that will apply and meet income guidelines for relocation assistance, the city must pay one-half of that assistance. This is a flagrant abuse of city code, one that will convert forty-eight affordable units into being unaffordable and displaced forty-eight families. Cadence and other corporate property owners are doing this in many dozens of buildings all across the city, with SDCI happily issuing permits, as they just did with my building last week, because SDCI fears legal action from developers, whereas they feel no threat from disempowered tenants or cities' elected officials. How can the council claim they are fighting homelessness when the city regularly issues permits for an end run around tenant laws that will simply produce more homeless people? How can council members feel good about providing tenant protections that now only exist on paper and not in reality? These renovation evictions must be halted. Thank you.
That's our final speaker in public comment.
Thank you to everybody who spoke in public comment. Before we begin the item, I just want to do quickly address one of the points that the last speaker, Howard Gale, made about Cadence Real Estate and tenants at the Shadow Building. Thank you, Howard, for mentioning that. We had heard that from community members, and in fact, my office is going to be in touch with the tenants this morning, actually, first thing, and make sure that we are helping the tenants of Shadow, the Shadow Building, fight back against this latest attempt. I don't know how many are listening and of them, how many remember or know about the fight back we had done alongside the Shadow tenants in two thousand and nineteen? And we, it was actually a really encouraging example of tenants because they got organized alongside our office and community members and union members who stood by them. We were actually able to defeat Cadence Corporation in their attempts at that time to evict the tenants. And these are all working class or senior tenants on fixed income. And so we want to make sure that those gains are not lost, and we will make sure to also share with the members of the public next time we are here in this committee to relay to them what, you know, the progress that we have been able to make, hopefully, on that issue. Now we will begin the briefing on capping the late fees landlords may charge for overdue rent. We are joined by Devin Glaser from the Tenant Law Center and Kate Rubin from B Seattle. Welcome to you both. Thank you for being here. I've already made a few points about this, but obviously, we are looking forward to hearing in more detail from you both about the problem itself, how it affects renters, and what the legislation would do and why it's necessary. So please introduce yourselves for the record and then begin your presentation.
Hi. Thank you, Councilmember Sawant, Councilmembers Juarez, Morales, Nelson, Lewis. I hope I didn't miss anyone. I'm Devin Glaser. I'm a staff attorney with the Tenant Law Center. And then Kate Rubin, do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Kate Rubin. I'm the organizing director and co-executive director of B Seattle.
And I can't quite see the screen. Is the PowerPoint up or? Cool. It's not particularly complicated. I think last time I was in front of council, I had to explain a hundred and seventy-five-page report, so I had lots and lots to add. Here, we're kind of just talking about a situation that's facing many renters in Seattle and kind of a gap in legal protections. So we have quite a few laws in Seattle that regulate some of the landlord-tenant interactions, but right now, nothing that really covers late fees and then so-called notice fees. So while Seattle may be preempted from regulating rent, it is not preempted from regulating the fees that some landlords may charge. And in the gap we're facing, landlords are kind of, I mean, they're given free rein to charge whatever they want. So I think some landlords may charge totally reasonable fees, and they would not be impacted by this legislation. Other landlords charge, I would say, very heinous fees, and they would probably find that their power to do so would be capped by this. If you want to pop the next two slides, because I think the next one's just introductions. We've been working with part of the State House to help the coalition to kind of go around different cities throughout King County and pass legislation to protect tenants and kind of work in the gap between what state law allows and what local ordinances can really do. As part of that, we've been copying a lot of Seattle regulations because Seattle has some really great regulations. And so both unincorporated King County and cities around Seattle have been kind of emulating Seattle. But also, we've done some things that Seattle has yet to do. So right now, late fees are completely unregulated. A landlord could charge a million-dollar late fee, they could charge a penny late fee. And I think that probably some guidance from the council would be really good. Auburn and Burien just cap late fees at ten dollars a month. I think that is the proposed legislation we're looking at here. Kenmore, Redmond, and unincorporated King County capped at one point five percent of the monthly rent. I think that sounds fair, but then as rents escalate, those small percentages actually start getting to very high amounts for paying your rent a day late. If you want to go, actually, once again, two more slides, because I'm not very good at PowerPoint. That's basically the same information. Here we go. I think the language we're looking at here is, basically, I don't want to read aloud, but it would cap rents at ten dollars and then also include a language here that says, no other fees may be charged for non-payment of rent or default of the rental agreement, including for the service of notice. What I've been seeing in Seattle and other local cities as a staff attorney with the Tenant Law Center is tenants who are being charged fees for the delivery of notices. So whenever you're dealing with your landlord, whether you are out of compliance with your lease and they give you a ten-day notice, whether you are behind on a rent and they give you a fourteen-day or a thirty-day notice, whether you just have a late fee and they give you a piece of paper on your door that says you have a late fee, they're charging for the privilege of receiving that notice. Once again, this is an unregulated area of the law, so as as housing is more scarce and landlords have more power in the landlord-tenant relationship, they kind of get creative here. And I can show some examples of this, of what this would fix in the next slide. Go ahead and pop to the next one. So here's a ledger that I kind of made anonymous there. This is actually a person who is a housing and essential needs tenant, so they get a thousand dollars a month from the state to help pay for housing. Their rent is thirteen hundred dollars a month or eleven hundred and thirty dollars a month, right? They missed a payment, started being hit with late fees of seventy-five dollars a month, a notice delivery fee, which is another thing we'd hope to make illegal, of twenty-five dollars a month. So while the late fee is only seventy-five, they then threw on a third of that as a fee. They then would not let them renew their lease, so they charged them a month-to-month fee of a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. And so a tenant who was just slightly behind on one rental payment ended up owing, I should have summed this, but like hundreds of dollars extra each month. And as someone who is living off of substantial government subsidy, but only paid about a hundred and thirty of, you know, her own income, being stuck with four hundred or so of a deficit each month really, really put her behind. And so this is where it may sound abstract, you know, we're just saying, should we limit late fees? Should we limit them to percent? Should we say you shouldn't charge for a delivery of a piece of paper that's notifying you of your late fee? But when people are living on the margins, which more and more Seattle residents are, these small things really, really nickel-and-dine people out of their houses. If you want to go to the next slide. One more slide if you can.
Before moving on to the next.
Yeah, if you have a question, feel free.
No, it's not so much a question, Devin. It's, it's been hard to understand. It's not that you're not audible. It's, for some reason, maybe if you speak a little bit slower, it'll help. I'm not sure what the problem is, Ted. Can you identify what?
It's, yeah, I think just the sound quality is
Okay.
a little off. So if you speak more slowly, it might be a lot more.
Sure. I also speak, talk, so forgive me.
I know. I do the same. So, yeah, I get that all the time.
And feel free to please ask me any questions to go back, because, again, the core of what we're proposing here is not like overly complex. The idea is just to showcase how, what can sound like a small fee can really hurt someone. So just to loosely reiterate, this is a tenant who lives off of the Housing and Essential Needs Program. It's a state program that pays a thousand dollars a month towards rent for people who are disabled or otherwise very low-income and qualify. So her portion was a hundred and thirty for full rent, and the state pays another thousand. But when a portion of that was paid late, I actually think it was the nonprofit that helped pay, paid late, so it wasn't even the tenant. But regardless, she was hit with a seventy-five-dollar late fee, which is half of what she paid because her rent, her portion was a hundred and thirty. A second twenty-five-dollar delivery fee where they delivered the notice saying you didn't pay rent correctly. Late fees on her utilities, they wouldn't let her renew her lease, so they started charging her an additional month-to-month fee. And so a tenant who used to pay a hundred and thirty dollars out of pocket started paying close to, you know, three hundred, four hundred dollars out of pocket because all of a sudden, those small fees really started to add up. And so as we think about, you know, what does it mean to say late fees shouldn't be more than ten dollars? Or late fees shouldn't be more than, say, a certain percentage? It's really thinking about people who are just barely able to stay housed and who may be able to kind of cover the rent, even if it's a very large struggle. But then when they miss payment by a day or when they miss payment because of a clerical error, all of a sudden, just a deluge of charges come out of nowhere, and those charges right now are just completely unregulated. If the Senate were to face eviction and go to court, there's a chance that some of these would have been thrown out. But you have to end up in court before anything that really occurs, and court is both expensive and ideally, it's something we want to avoid for every tenant on the margins. You don't really want to be in eviction court. You want to be staying in a good relationship with your landlord, particularly if you can't afford the rent otherwise. And so I think this is a good example of, of why these small, like these large fees can really make a difference on the margins. I see two questions, I think.
Thanks. Yeah, I was waiting for you to finish.
All right.
Councilmember Nelson and then Councilperson Juarez. Go ahead, Councilmember Nelson.
Do you happen to know if the tenant was enrolled in the utility discount program?
I don't have an answer for you there, no.
Okay. I'm, I am just wondering, I'll follow up on that with City Light. Thanks.
Go ahead, President Juarez.
Oh, thank you. So Devin, yes, you do talk very fast, so I'm trying to get up to speed here on your slide deck. So just help me out here. It may be a dumb question, so I understand it. So you have, so you have examples, late fees, utility late fees, notice delivery fees, which I want to get back to that because that doesn't sound right. But anyway, so you're listing like, like a utility late fee, electric, what the costs are when people are late and what costs are imposed when people are late in paying their bill, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you're not saying that all of this could, are you, are you saying that all of these late fees could add up on top of the late fee for paying your rent late?
Yeah, so inclusive of paying your rent late, which was for this tenant, seventy-five dollars out of the one thirty they paid out of pocket. They're also getting fees for delivery of the notice that your rent is late. They're getting utility late fees. It just starts getting things like thrown on, on top of everything. And what's hard is like, I mean, this is just one example of many, but this, this area is just very unregulated. So, I mean, rent itself is pretty unregulated. The fee structures are pretty unregulated. So if a landlord dislikes a tenant or just feels like they want to pad their bottom line, they can charge whatever amount they want once a tenant misses a payment or is late on a payment. I mean, ultimately, in all these situations, the landlord is paid in full, like tenants don't want to miss their rent because they then lose their housing, and people really, really work to avoid that. So these fees, I'm sure, is an inconvenience to be paid rent late or utilities late. But in the absence of regulation, they can be very exorbitant and more than like the cost to the actual landlord of what it costs to get a check a day later.
So you, so again, and it could be me. You're saying, is this example, is this chart, if somebody is late on their rent, besides getting the fee, the seventy-five-dollar late fee, that all these other charges could accrue as well?
Yes.
Or do accrue?
Without regulation, it's basically up to the landlord to decide how much they want to soak the tenant. I mean, like, there are people who are good landlords and hopefully would not do this. And again, they wouldn't be impacted by this legislation, but because there's no law at all, they can do whatever they want. And when you have a very big power imbalance between the landlord and tenant, and then a landlord who just feels like they want to charge higher fees, that's a, that's a dangerous calculation.
Okay, so, well, I don't know. I mean, let's not get into a discussion about private property and how people feel about that in this country. I don't, I mean, people can do what they want with their property, but you're right, there is a landlord-tenant relationship. There is a power relationship. There is a contract, a meeting of the minds of when you pay your rent, so I get that. So when you say, statement like, it's a, so your, your position, or what you understand, with these fees being listed, that all of this is totally, quote-unquote, unregulated area of the law?
Yes.
So there's no law that says with your electric bill, your utility bill, your sewer, your trash, that no, there's no ten percent, or there's no cap on any of these late fees, setting aside the rental thing for a minute, all those other ones?
The city of Seattle, so Auburn does, right, like Kirkland does. So we have the possibility to do so, but a tenant in Seattle would not have a protection right now.
Okay, I think the point of confusion might be just, might help to recognize that what Devin is saying is that all these are from the landlord. The landlord is free to slap any label and then say a late fee for this, a late fee for that, late fee for the other. That's the problem. And so in a lot of this is not visible, so in reality, really, income-strapped tenant might end up being liable for all kinds of late fees.
Oh, I see what you're saying now, Madam Chair. These are all at the discretion of the landlord that says, hey, I'm not just going to impose a seventy-five, by the way.
No, it's not. It's not just one very particular kind of case where the tenant was late on all kinds of things. It's, it's the landlord is free to charge all kinds of things.
So there's like five areas where there's six areas.
Actual bill.
And it's an actual bill. It is an example bill.
Got it. So now I get it. Okay.
Yeah, but the reason it's, it's a good represent, it's a representative example is that it's widespread that the landlord can charge late fees on different things, even though it's, in reality, it's tenant, it hasn't paid the rent because, you know, whatever, financial adversity or whatever, so they, so that's why the question of capping late fees comes into being so that they can't then have all these ten different categories where they can charge different late fees, and then suddenly you're liable for hundreds of dollars.
So the question I have for you probably as well, Madam Chair and Devin, is, and so when you talk about, what is notice delivery for? What is that?
I mean, I would probably use profanity to describe it, but it's a completely made-up fee where basically they said you owe seventy-five dollars because your rent was late. We're going to charge you an additional twenty-five dollars because we told you rent was late. I mean, it's, it's.
That's the landlord saying, that's the landlord saying, because I have to do this. It's the landlord you're talking about.
Yes, he's just creating a fee for handing out a piece of paper, and I wish I could print money that easily, right? And I could give you a number of examples of landlords who've said in policy that anytime they give a legal notice, so a ten-day notice, a late fee notice, a fourteen-day parrot vacate notice, they're charging for the delivery of the notice. And delivering notice is not like a legal process. It's a predicate to starting a legal process, but it's just printing out a piece of paper. So if a landlord can say, you owe, you know, you owe late fee, also, I'm going to charge you twenty-five dollars on top of that. That's both completely unregulated and really out of that field. I don't know how they feel.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree with you on that one. Yeah, I can see that. Yeah, it sounds like.
I mean, it, yeah, the whole notice delivery fee is, is, is it almost seems unreal, like it seems like would a landlord actually go to this length that they would charge the tenant a fee, a fee for having to deliver the notice of the late fee? I mean, it's just so, just so brazen and absurd that it should be illegal on the face of it. And it's just stunning that it's not, and I'm not a lawyer, but it seems to be really just a flaunting of law, capping late, flouting of the law, capping late fees because, you know, the question it begs is what's next, you know, printing late fee notices on blue paper? And then charging a blue paper fee, you know, where does it end? So it's.
Yeah, it does. It seems, it seems punitive in nature, quite frankly, but I like what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
And just briefly on that, I also, so ten-day notices are also often given by landlords to say, please follow X and X rule or so. And so I've been seeing fees for that, too. And once again, like, there's just no limit to what you can write, like ten-day notice, please pick up your recycling or whatever. So they're also charging the fee to print out a notice just saying, please follow your lease, like. I would love to have some kind of regulation in this area because it's so free-form. I mean, I want to pull my hair out when I get calls from tenants because it's so strange. And I'm sorry, I know the Councilmember Nelson, etc.
No, actually, Councilmember Morales hasn't spoken yet, so Councilmember Morales, go ahead, and then, and I'll, yeah, and I'll chair the meeting. And Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I just, I want to go back to this bill and just make sure that I'm understanding, right, what you said, Devin, which is that this utility late fee, sewage, garbage, water, these are not late fees imposed by the utilities themselves as part of their process. These are, these are additional fees added by the landlord for each utility that is being used by the tenant.
Yes. So this is one of those things where, like, the landlord is billing individually for utilities and water, trash, et cetera. Yes, so this is one of those things where like the landlord is billing individually for utilities and water, trash, et cetera. Um, and then like. On top of that, charging a late fee for the utility, on top of that, charging a a a fee for delivering the notice that your your fees are late. Um, on top of that, charging a late fee for rent, and then also on top of that, refusing to let the tenant sign a longer lease term. So then charging a fee for being on a month to month lease. So like, it's just a lot of of play in the areas that are unregulated. But taken together, I mean, for a very low income tenant, this is. I I don't know how to to use polite language about it, like this is, this is scary.
Thank you, uh Devin. Sorry, uh, Councilmember Morales, did you have a follow up or?
No, I'm good. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Nelson, go ahead.
I think that um this, our conversation so far is we're we're wondering about the late fee. And um I think that just this is a good example of why we should also ask the um the landlord, what. Where does this come from and what does this pay for? I'm imagining that it's probably for to pay for a property management company. Um, because they, a lot of the building owners have property managers that uh cost money to. Contract with, and so I'm just imagining that's what that's for. I'm not excusing it, I'm just saying that's my thinking here, but we should ask them. But anyway, um landlords can't, correct me if I'm wrong, Devin, but were these fees, uh late fees for rent? Um, uh, expressed in the lease? I mean, it seems to be that uh they must be. Uh, that this fee schedule should be in the uh the lease agreement. So in other words, that um they're regulated not necessarily by uh rules set by. You know, government, but they are regulated by the contract that is signed.
Well, there's kind of two things. So the the statewide law, the Residential Landlord Tenant Act. Regulates what can and cannot be in leases, and so things that are blatantly illegal cannot be included in a lease and you can't contract away your basic rights. Uh, but there's a lot of uncovered area there, so it would probably be covered by the lease. Um, the way there's a huge power imbalance in like who gets to write leases because tenants are not able to free form edit their lease when they're looking for housing. Um, but separately, like this tenant here is on a month to month lease, which means that the terms of release can be changed within thirty days' notice. Um, there may be a requirement for like notice for rent increases that are longer, like, you know, City of Seattle is a hundred eighty days, other cities is two months. Um, but for a change in a basic rule, like a late fee structure, um that could be done over thirty days' notice. So if you're already in a house, if your landlord changes the rules and says, starting thirty days from now, if I give you a a late fee, I'm going to charge you a twenty five dollar notice. You can move out. I mean, there's not much you can do to to fix that, right? And so realizing that there is a housing scarcity issue. And tenants do not really have the freedom to just walk away when the contract terms are bad. Um, is why we regulate this area. I mean, it is a heavily regulated area because it's housing and because there's a huge power imbalance. And if you don't like the terms, there really isn't a lot of freedom to just walk away, particularly on a short term basis.
Did you have a follow up, Councilwoman Nelson?
No, not right now.
Thank you. Um, and I also wanted to uh invite Kate Rubin into the discussion. Kate, did did you want to add anything? Not just on this topic, but anything that we've discussed so far.
Um, I did have a little bit to add, but I wasn't sure if this was the end of Devon's portion.
Well, please hop in. I don't need me to dominate the Zoom room.
Um, so there was a an article in the Seattle Times last year. That showed about forty seven percent of Seattle renters are are cost burden, meaning that um we spend. Uh, thirty percent or more of our income on our housing, um, which means that. A lot of renters here in Seattle are are living paycheck to paycheck. Um, so if there's an emergency. It, if rent isn't getting paid because it's usually prioritized, something bad happened. Um, for example, uh, a restaurant was recently shut down and none of the workers were paid. Um. Restaurant workers are often living paycheck to paycheck. Uh, so so the idea that they could be late and then they would be charged. The late fee, the delivery of notice fee, which is one of the most ridiculous fees I have ever heard. Um. And then some places even charge compounding late fees, so if you're. Late by one day, you pay X amount. If you're late by another day, it adds up and the these fees add up so quickly. So not only are you dealing with your emergency, you're dealing with uh. Being nickel nickel and dimed uh to death over what is essentially an unavoidable accident. Um. And it's so hard to get caught up from there. Um, I I think probably most of us are. Familiar with the the idiom, you can't squeeze blood from a turnip. That's exactly what these um fees are doing. They're they're just trying to get more money from uh people who are struggling. Um, landlords are. At this point, profiting from people being late.
Right, tha- thanks so much for making that point. I know you guys have have more of the presentation and um and you should go ahead, but just just wanted to interject by. Saying that I really appreciated the point you made, Kate, because I think that if we don't keep. This fact in mind, it 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 can be extremely misleading as to. Why landlords are actually even charging late fees, and this goes to the question that. Councilmember Nelson was asking, what what do they do with these late fees? And I think that that's that's a really important point to recognize that. If you look at the data, when tenants, for the most part, obviously, we're not, you know, there are outlier cases, but. We're talking about what is statistically the most predominant and what happens, we what we see is statistically speaking. Uh, rent tenants want to pay their rent on time because they don't want to get into trouble. They don't want a bad, they don't want an eviction on their renting record. They don't want their credit score to be affected negatively, so they're going to do everything in their power. To pay their full rent on time and when they don't, it's eh as you as you were saying, Kate, something bad has happened and that's why they are not able to. And so it really, uh, if if you look at the math of how much money landlords, especially corporate landlords. End up spending in really trying to squeeze blood out of a turnip or as in India, they say blood out of a stone. They actually spend more dollars. If you add up the dollars, it's more than what the tenant might have owed them. But really, it comes down to also what Devon was referring to. There's a deep imbalance of power between tenants and landlords and. You know, this is, this is what happens in that situation, and that is why a full bill of rights for renters, including rent control, obviously, that's the biggie. Um, that that is needed, uh but eliminating late fees is in. In the vein of the renters' rights that we have been fighting for and winning and uh it's good that we've been able to get. Uh, majority votes on the council on all of those, on all of those aspects. Uh, one question I had before you go on is. Uh, we're talking about late fees for rent, um, and maybe you have this in your presentation, and if so, you can wait to that point, but. Uh, isn't it also true that very often, and maybe you have statistics for this, information of this, is. Uh, tenants pay eh when they're in financial difficulty, it's not like they they don't pay any of their rent. There are case, many cases where they pay. As much as they can, but maybe they're not able to pay their full rent. And even then, they get into trouble. And the reason I'm referring to this is, and and I'm sure Kate and Devon know about this, but this um. Famous or really or really infamous as far as the landlord is concerned, this case that happened in January twenty nineteen. Where a renter named Kilani Luxmore, she owed the her landlord two dollars in the rent. And she faced eviction and the Housing Justice Project, which is the uh part of the King County Bar Association. They fought her case and for successfully against her eviction, but that's an example of where she owed. Two dollars and yet it was a problem, so it is connected to the question of late fees as well.
Well, yes, small balances can lead to, I mean, evictions, right? So, I mean, even most. Like a landlord doesn't really charge you a late fee until the sixth, but they could technically give you a fourteen day or a thirty day pair of vacate notice on the second when you didn't pay. And if you're missing some of what is owed, um, they could file a case against you. I think it is. I may mainly just harassing a tenant to to file a case over a small balance because it costs money to go to court. But once a case is filed against a tenant, they have an eviction on their record. Win or lose, they could win the case. That eviction is a court record. We have very. Open access to public records um in the state. And so. Even if your landlord files an eviction against you for nothing and is thrown out because it's a bad case, um, there is still that eviction record. There's some like creative workarounds we can try to do to to restore a tenant's, you know, screening record, but the eviction's there forever, even if you win. So trying to avoid um unnecessary evictions, particularly over small stuff, is really valuable.
Thanks. Uh, President Waters, did you have a question before they move on to the next slide? You're you're mute.
Man, I haven't heard that in a while. Thank you. They are on mute. Um. Madam Chair, what I was going to ask is, I I actually had a few follow up legal questions, but. I wanted you to get them to get through their slide deck, so I didn't know how much more is there or if you wanted me to wait, because I think. When we start getting to some of the discussion and debate, not debate, but discussion about these kind of contracts and what they mean. In the realm of housing, which is separate than different kind of contracts, because there's a um public policy piece there that has to be discussed, so I. I wanted to know what from from you, Madam Chair, what would be the right time to bring up those kind of issues.
I believe there's one more slide if you want to finish the slide deck first or.
Then I'll hold my questions till then.
Yeah, if you want to go to the next one, it's it's pretty brief. This is just uh. Showing how fees as a percentage of rent sound like a pretty fair calculation, but because we have no limit on um. On rents in Seattle or or the state of Washington, um, as rents get really high, a percentage based fee system can also be really high. So this is a tenant who was late on rent and was being charged two hundred and five dollars a month for for being late. So even if this money is meant to pay for the cost of a management company or the cost of an overdraft fee or whatever, you know, cost the landlord might say. It's hard to really imagine that being two hundred and five dollars for being a day late on your rent. So while I think. Kirkland and um unincorporated King County, et cetera, have said late fees to a percentage, um. That's just inherently going to be a sliding scale, and as rents go up, that also means late fees would go up, whereas a flat cap, you know, doesn't have that that predicament. And then the last slide is just the list of uh cosigners, so um to make me not feel alone out here, it's not just Kate and I. Uh, so the State House, State Health Coalition is a very large um organization of people who are really trying to deal with. I mean, the the crisis of our time, right? There's not enough housing, there's not enough affordable housing and. People who were housed last month are unhoused this month because we're being pushed out for a variety of reasons, but the most common one is that the cost that. You know, are going to your landlord become too high to pay. Um, so I'm not going to read everything there, but like, we we've sent a letter to the the council and to the mayor. Encouraging a passage of these protections, um, and we'd be happy to answer questions, but just. Uh, it's not just me as as a random staff attorney for the tenant law center, it's not just Kate, uh, there's a lot of interest in in making sure that we protect Seattle tenants because. I mean, I think we're all afraid of of losing our neighbors, right? Like, I I grew up in Seattle. Most of my best friends from high school and college can't afford to live here anymore. They live in. Port Townsend and Skamania County, like, it's, it's it's heartbreaking. So I think if we can ensure that our communities can stay in. Their communities they want to stay in, um, that's really powerful.
Thanks, uh, Devin and Kate for the presentation and yeah, I want to call on uh President Waters to uh ask a question. I just wanted to say, though, in that slide. It's really important to see how many organizations, you know, both community organizations, renters rights organizations and. And labor organizations or community organizations are part of the coalition. Uh, you should add socialist alternative. You know, we are also part of that coalition and for some strange reason that's missing, so I would appreciate that you add that. Um, and then President Waters, yeah, go ahead with your questions.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the presentation, uh, Kate and Devin. So I just want to go back to some. Uh, the question, also the comment raised by uh Councilmember Nelson as well. So, um, I'm going to get a little wonky here, so I make sure I understand it. When we go back to the un-unregulated law statement that you made, and then I I I agree with you, there's there's a real question about the notice fee being illegal. That that sounds to me just straight up wrong. Um, I think we have to start the premise with, and you probably know this as well, Madam Chair, that, you know, you can't. If you have a contract, you you can't contract illegality. I don't care what, you you can't. Um, and so what I'm hearing from my head is. Harking back to contract law and um housing, um. And you saw this a lot in what they call adhesion contracts, and I'm sure Kate Kate and Devon are familiar with adhesion contracts. Where they're just unconscionable, uh, they're contracts that just contravene public policy. And we saw though, we saw that a lot in the eighties and not eighties, nineties, which they can't do anymore, and the kind of rent to buy. Like furniture, where you would end up paying, you know, four hundred dollars for a fifty dollar couch. Because you just had to keep paying and getting late fees or not paying it, and and those are outlawed no matter what. So I know that we're in the area of housing, which is public policy, which is different than other contracts for goods and services. So that's where you have like a more heightened conversation where public policy comes in, where you have, you have room, I believe, for the renter. To have a little bit more power in the unbalanced relationship between a landlord and a tenant. So what I'm looking at here, obviously, um, a landlord does have some superior bargaining power because it is their property. But by public policy and law and the fact that it's housing, the tenant has rights as well. And particularly now in our housing crisis that we're seeing and we have been seeing. You know, I'm sure as long as Councilmember Sawat has been on council declaring our our homelessness and housing issues. So what I'm trying to get at here is. Have you thought of or are you going to be presenting again about? Like, a good example is, again, I go back to the the notice fee. Of of letting us know like which ones, it's it's clear where we can put in a category. That um these are, these are just unconscionable against public policy and shouldn't be imposed. And then those maybe that we can find out as Councilmember Nelson raised, you know, what is the landlord or or property company say about that? Because I I I really want to hear the other side of that. Um, before I would make a decision, so I have the full picture. I'm not trying to defend um a a tenant or a landlord. Or a co- company, I just want the full picture. So, um. We may have some people that come in and say, look, um, I manage property and I'm also a landlord and I have never imposed those fees and I don't know how many people who do do that. I know when people are being persuasive, they put the best facts forward, but I kind of want to see all of it. So are we going to see more of that from you folks?
I. I guess my point would be that if someone's not doing this, they're not going to be affected by the legislation, right? We have speeding laws that affect people who walk. And they don't have people who drive the speed limit. Landlords who don't do um these unconscionable policies don't need to worry about us passing laws banning them. Um, because it is kind of just irrelevant at that point. By its nature, like I do tenant defense, I help people when they're facing. A a problem with their landlord, so I'm only going to deal with tenants in trouble and landlords who are being problematic. Um, but there's a lot of them, and I think if we just ban the bad practices, then there's plenty of room for landlords with good practices. To continue to be good landlords, uh, but we make it a league trust.
So let me ask, how did Auburn and Buryan get to the point of capping it um ten dollars a month? How did they come to that number? Do you know?
I couldn't tell you how they came to the number. I think they said it was a fair number.
Okay, so, um, and then you probably then don't know how Kenmore and Redman decided to cap at one point five percent monthly.
Uh, I mean, so all of them are are part time councils, they meet like six thirty on a Monday, so I've I've listened to them on a lot of them. Um, they've all deliberated and tried to figure out what they thought was fair and then kind of settled on a number, but um.
Okay, so what I'm asking then is two parts then. Number one, what we would want to regulate or just outright outlaw. And then the second section would be what would be a good way to land to cap, because obviously Seattle rents are different than Kenmore rents. Um, I don't even know if um if, I I mean, I'm I'm inclined to to suggest a, um. A a different number, but I I feel like I need to have some more information.
Well, it ultimately messes up to the council, like I'm just here to tell about uh what we see.
Oh, no, no, you don't get to back away now. No, you don't get to.
I mean, I mean.
You don't get to have all the answers and all of a sudden, oh, no, I'm just a guy here.
Well, I'm quite happy to be here, but like I don't have legislative authority, so eh you guys get to decide what you think is a a fair amount. Um, but I think that, you know, if you're going to charge someone for being late on rent, a small amount is fair. I think if you're tying it. As a percent, it has to be a pretty small percent because rents are huge. And I think at the end of the day, if tenants are paying. Forty to sixty to seventy percent of their incomes to their landlords, um, we need to be very careful that if they're a day late, um, they aren't. Charged sixty five, seventy five percent, right? Like, these these are tenants who are really, really striving to stay housed.
Right, and I'm not, I I'm not disagreeing with you in that whole issue. What I'm trying to get at, because you're here to advise us what you think is a good number. To cap at. So I'm asking you, where do you get that number or how do you come about that? That's what I'm getting at. So if there's more discussion on that.
I think as, yes, as um, as Devon was saying earlier, the the reason. That a a city like Auburn arrived at ten dollars an hour is uh not an hour, ten dollars, is because it is fair. That's the whole point. I mean, so again, it's it's a ultimately, that is why it is not, I mean, I. Do you have a slight disagreement with Devon? It's it's not just that, oh, the city council has legislative authority. No, the city council will end up passing what renters demand. And so there is a real role for renters to come to City Hall and say, this is, this, this is actually. Uh, insult upon injury in the sense that the rents are already so high. I mean, obviously, it's worse in Seattle than in Auburn. And then on top of that. If you talk about, um, you know, as as the the one of the slides that uh you all had where the rent itself is uh to. Where the rent itself is uh two thousand fifty dollars and then you add late fees of two hundred and five dollars, that is, that is beyond the capacity of somebody. Who's in that situation in the first place, because they are having extreme financial hardship. So to find two hundred odd dollars, you know, just to take that example, is impossible. So i- in other words, that that uh tenant is going to sink further and further into financial trouble. It's not going to allow them to actually come out of that. And uh and I think it's a, it's a good question to ask, you know, so what are landlords gaining? I think one useful, and we should, we should, I'm I'm glad you're asking all these questions, uh Councilmember Juarez and uh President Juarez and also Councilmember Nelson. Because, you know, it does give us a sense of uh what what um uh what more material we can bring for the next discussion. Because we're not gonna be looking at a legislation until the middle of next month, at the earliest. Because uh I think you, we already have statistics that show that landlords, and I was saying this earlier. Landlords, actually, if you look at it in dollar terms, and these are, many of them are big landlords. They end up spending more in dollar terms in trying to evict their tenants. And it it's the almost entirely, it is low income tenants who are in a very bad financial situation. Than the actual money that is owed to them. So I don't think that the answer to this question, what do they gain and how much they spend, is going to come on the basis of just looking at dollar terms. Because in reality, it is, uh you know, if if you look at just in dollar terms, and it's actually better for the landlord to let the tenant live, live. Continue to live in that unit and not go after them. However, the reason they're going, they're doing that is because each time they do that, each time that cycle happens, it allows them to increase the rent. And then there's always some other potential, you know, prospective tenant who can pay more rent. Because that's what's happening, there are people who can pay a lot of re- ten- rent. It is squeezing them also at this point, but the people who get squeezed the most are working class and working. And to but to be honest with you, I will also tell you, I've had many tech workers, well-paid tech workers who come and say. I am paying so much in rent, I'm barely, you know, able to get by, that's how much rent has gone up. So I think late fees uh is not the be all and end all of it, you know, we do need rent control. But is something that is punitive and to use your own word, uh President Juarez, it's punitive on people. Because it doesn't serve any purpose in terms of actually helping them stay in their rental homes. Uh but these are good questions we can come back to in the next discussion.
Madam Chair, may I have a follow-up to you, what you just said?
Yes.
So and and I'm hoping we have this and some more information and and I could talk to you offline about what maybe we, a little bit more helpful, a little bit more information. But what I'm also concerned about is those folks that when this happens. What happens to the credit line and credit score, particularly if they're unbanked? Um that that's always been a concern of mine, as when people, um when you have a credit score, people look at different things. But we've also been pushing that, you should also look at people that other credit lines of, did they pay their rent on time? Do they pay their phone bill on time? Do they pay their cable bill on time? All of those should go into your credit score as well to show that you're a good, you pay your bills on time. Not just a car and a mortgage, not everybody has that. So I'm thinking these unfortunate, I think unconscionable byproducts that come when you impose fees like this and people can't pay it. And then they send it to, we saw this with Sound Transit with 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 fees and not paying your fare. Then they wanna send it to court, and then, of course, it affects their credit score or whatever, they try to buy a home or rent a home or try to rent again. So I guess I'm just seeing the ripple effect of this, so it isn't just the fee itself. It follows you around and you can't get rid of it, and I'll just probably, you know. There was a day when I was young and I was a college student and couldn't afford rent, and then it followed me all the way past law school. I'm like, my god, that happened in nineteen eighty-three, that's still there. So that's the kind of stuff I think about as well, so um I just want to put that out there, so thank you.
Thank you so much, President Juarez, I mean, that is a very important point, it follows you everywhere. Once, once, even it is small hardship leads you to missing a payment. And then it follows you, as you said, you know, for years, sometimes decades, and it does affect your credit score. So all of these ripple effects are there, and we should definitely make that as part of the discussion, I appreciate you mentioning that. Um Council member Nelson, did you have a question?
Yeah, um so I just wanted to uh to agree with Council President Juarez about um needing to get the other side. Because when I, with all due respect here, you say it is fair, that is subjective. So we do need to understand uh the other uh why this is, why these fees are being charged. What are the burdens that landlords are under that we might not know about? Because when Kate says, um I think it was landlords are profiting from people being late. It could be that they are also incurring fees from the utility for being late. And if they're just a small landlord and just have one renter, you know, that's a different story than if they're a multifamily uh housing provider. In which case, we also need to understand what our nonprofit housing providers are, um what are they thinking about this too? Because there are nonprofit and for-profit housing providers whose perspective that we should be taking into account, I think, before we go forward. Um where I'm coming from is simply that I am concerned about these, about small landlords selling properties. Because it is becoming more and more difficult in Seattle to uh to do business. Because of um because of regulations that maybe they didn't have much input into. Before they were implemented. So I just wanna make sure that that is, that we hear all sides, because I don't want more of these. I know that um that this is a term of art, but naturally affording affordable units, um older. Homes going off the market, because it becomes untenable for them to keep going. And so we do have to understand where they're coming from. And I think, was, isn't it, now this is my question. Aren't landlords required to offer repayment plans before even getting to eviction? So are these um are these late fees uh uh negotiated? Or are these repayment plans um taking into account, maybe writing off any of these late fees? Or have you seen any repayment plans that have written off some of these fees? Uh in the, in the terms that are offered before.
So by the time you're in court, these late fees are waived, you can't relate fees alone, and so repayment plans often cover just back to rent.
No, but before it gets to um winner eviction, when are the.
They don't waive the fees because they have no incentive to. Um but once you're in court, yes, they're often waived, uh but like, that's a very expensive process. Um and then also just to kinda like, you know, put a a pin in the repayment plans process. A lot of people owe back rent from COVID or from just a life emergency. Um and it's really good that we've like built a repayment plan system to let tenants pay back. But like landlords get all of their money back over time. Um you know, we we kind of uh, we told workers they couldn't go to work, because we were having a global COVID nineteen emergency. And we told landlords, you will get paid, we will get paid back in a year. Um so it's, I mean, I guess it's a whole separate conversation to go into repayment plans. But like, the landlords are ending up getting their money, and if they don't, the tenants get evicted and, you know, they're they're out. Um but it's kind of separate from the late fee conversation, because mu- much of this happens pre-court, right? Your landlord just applies a late fee, and then you pay it because you're afraid of a court filing. Um and so this is much more regulated, the areas that would happen before you had someone to complain, before you were there in front of a judge or a commissioner. This is just a, you know, the day-to-day interactions, because most tenants thankfully are not in eviction court, um but they still have issues with their landlord.
Thank you, Devin, Ted, did you wanna add something?
Um I wanted to come in uh briefly about the uh this um balance of power between the landlord and the renter. My uh previous landlord, not my current one, but my previous one, charged um for late fees. For rent that was um the first day that it was late, you know, after the five days that are required uh by state law. But after the first day that it was late, uh it was fifty dollars and then an additional twenty-five dollars a day, um until you're caught up. Um so after several days, I got a notice from my landlord that I was several days late. Um and I I was surprised, because I set up, so my bank just mailed them a check, you know, automatically. And um it turns out I was not late, and they just thought I was late, and they had actually cashed the check. And it was entirely their fault and it worked out for me. But if it, you know, if I didn't have those uh bank statements to prove that, or if I had been late, because I had lost my job. As um uh as Kate explained, you know, gave the example of, you know, if uh these um. It just, it just can run away with you, it can just spiral out of control. And in what, and and yes, it said that in my lease that they could do that. Um but in, on what universe could I say to my landlord when signing the lease, you know? Hey, actually, I think we should change this lease, so you don't charge late fees as much, because, you know, maybe I might be late, and then it would run away with me, you know, like. Uh I can't imagine any tenant ever negotiating something like that, just, so the power imbalance is is just, is just so great. That's the whole, the whole reason why we have discussions like this, it's not, it's not because landlords don't have enough power. I mean, they're some of the, some of the wealthiest people in uh in Seattle, and they've got the most power, and we need to correct that imbalance.
Right, uh uh exactly. I um wanted to also call on Kate, uh I saw your hand, zoom hand up, Kate, go ahead.
Um I I wanted to comment more on that, that power imbalance, because I, some landlords, as Devin pointed out. Charged to deliver the notice of these late fees and then continued charging. Um there is no like reverse uh version of that, where if a landlord delivers a notice. Or charges you for delivering a notice that is invalid, that 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 you can invoice them for your time. And your fear and your research, research and whatever else you need to uh resolve that. There, like, they charge these arbitrary amounts. But if it goes, it does not go the other way. So I'm sure, uh lo- I mean, luckily Ted had the the proof that it was paid. But still, it was a matter of research and um communicating with the landlord. And then imagine if you had had to pay the landlord for that delivery and then had to fight them on getting that money back.
Thanks so much, uh Kate, I appreciate that. I wanted to um in this context also reiterate a point that Devin had made earlier, which is that. If uh landlords are not engaging in this kind of punitive charging uh of their tenants. Then they wouldn't be affected by this legislation, any more than all of the other, uh any of the other renters like legislation. That we have succeeded in winning in the last ten years, where uh it, yes, it is protection for renters. But if you are not exploiting your tenants as a landlord, then it doesn't affect you in any way. Because, you know, that, those laws are meant to hold landlords accountable when they are exploiting um tenants. And that, that applies to this uh potential legislation also that we're talking about. And I also wanted to reiterate another point that Kate, you just made, which is really important, and sort of add to that, because you said that. There are no, uh you know, the landlords can charge all these things. Um but then a tenant cannot charge in the reverse, so the example that Ted gave, you know, th- there's no recourse for the tenant to do that. I wanted to also mention in this context that uh we, we've seen many cases where tenants are evicted. Obviously, because of even uh failing to pay a few dollars of their rent, because they're in financial hardship. But then, on the other hand, there is no reverse law that says that if the landlord failed to fix the problems. You know, for example, if your heating is not working in the winter, it's an, it's a good example of something that's happening to a lot of low income tenants. And this, this is, you know, survival issue, especially for families with children, for senior citizens. Uh but there's, we don't have a law in Seattle that yet, this is something that my office will be pushing for. Uh but I just wanted to say that that there's no law that says that if you as a tenant filed a complaint about something essential not working in your rental home. With the Department of Communicate, uh sort of Construction Inspection, and the landlord failed to fix that problem, there is no recourse for you. You don't get to say, you know, like the landlord gets to charge late fees, you as a tenant don't get to say, the landlord needs to pay me. For all the problems that they did not, that they failed to fix, there is no such reverse law. That's a, that's a prime example of the imbalance of power. And that's the context in which we should look at, and I'll, and I, and I don't actually agree, I mean, this is my political opinion. Obviously, council members have different opinions, but I don't actually agree that uh corporate landlords and the landlords who are exploiting their tenants. Don't have a platform. This committee, uh you know, at the chair committee that I'm chairing, this is for renters rights, and that's the name of the committee. And landlords are, have, everything else is their platform, the status quo has been their platform. So we, that's why we've had to push for the laws that we've been pushing for and winning. Because it is not like it's an equal situation, it's not a new, politically neutral situation, or landlords also have complaints. Uh tenants also have complained, it's not like that, it's for the most part, tenants that are getting exploited by corporate landlords. And for the landlords who are not doing the wrong thing, these laws don't affect them anyway. And in fact, we've had landlords who have supported us, small landlords who have supported every single renters rights that we've been pushing for. Because they don't want to be in the business of exploiting their tenants. And I definitely agree, we should look at uh the nonprofit question, I appreciate council members bringing that forward, and Devin and Kate. We should, let's talk offline as well in terms of, you know, what, what, um what, if there's data we can bring forward. And how we can take that into account. But in that context, I will also say that um at the end of the day, it, for the tenant, it doesn't make a difference. Who the landlord is, if you're getting exploited, you're getting exploited. So we want to end exploitation of uh tenants as a whole. So we should definitely take all those things into account, but I think paramount is what is uh going to be necessary. To improve the lives of renters in our city, in my view, anyway, so, and I'm sure renters will agree. Uh Councilmember Nelson, you still have your Zoom hand up, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I I had a follow-up for Devin, did you say that um that the uh? Late fees go away once you're in eviction court?
You you can't be evicted over late fees alone, yes, so once you're formally convicted, the fees are no longer really there, or they're limited to seventy-five dollars. But there's a whole world for you're in eviction court that is, you know.
Yeah, you can be evicted for non-payment of rent, but this, but late fees do not um cause eviction themselves, because they.
What can happen, though, is say you have five hundred dollars on your ledger and you pay your rent on the twenty-eighth of the month, because you're trying to be early and not get a late fee. Um they can take that money you paid, that was meant for rent, and then apply it to the late fees, and now your rent is behind. So, once you owe money to your landlord and they're alleging money owed for fees or damages or delivery notice fees or whatever they're creating. Um it's on your ledger, um and actually is, as we become increasingly um tech savvy, a lot of people pay rent via portals. And they can lock you out if you don't pay the correct amount that says balance due, but that balance due would include your rent plus the late fees that are there from the previous month. So a lot of tenants can't even just pay their rent as usual, if there's a fee on their account, because it says, you know, send the full amount or else buy. Right, like, the the fact that this is more technologically um savvy's not the right word, but like, as we move into the tech sector. Things that would not be possible if you're paying by check, you can just write the checkout for a full amount, are possible if it's done via app. Because, I mean, once again, power imbalance, a landlord programs the app, you just have a button to push. Um so this, if you are in a court of law, there's a way to fight the late fees. Everything before the court of law, there's really nothing, and that's why having a clear regulation would really protect tenants.
Uh I'm sorry, uh Devin, I'm sorry, as I said, the, because of the audio, I'm having a hard time um understanding what you're saying, but I don't know if you mentioned this already. But yeah, I think there is also data that shows that tenants end up self-evicting when, when they get. Um when, when they run into problems, because they don't know what's going to happen. And one of the things that the Housing Justice Project, which is uh, you know, which does provide, and and we have won through the People's Budget Movement. Funding for uh uh legal defense for tenants facing eviction. But they've said many times how, uh as a matter of fact, a a lot of tenants who end up in eviction court. They actually don't know what's, what's, uh you know, what what their rights are. And uh because they, they are, it's it's catching them at the worst possible situation sometimes in their lives, and they're having, you know, financial issues. They're probably having other problems in their lives. And so uh I think as much as we can have the law in, prevent these things happening in the first place. And not putting the tenants, renters, in the situation where they need to know the letter of the law, every detail, to be able to defend themselves, which I don't think is the case. They don't actually, um so I think that that will be good. And so in that sense, uh the late fee law that we're talking about here is also going to play that role. Where, you know, upfront, the tenants will be protected and and prevent landlords from doing something like that in the first place.
Yeah, well, self-evictions are actually very common, because if you're scared and you can't pay your rent or you owe money, you get a payer vacate and you say, or vacate. I can't pay, and tenants think I better run away. Um and unfortunately, what then happens um relatively often is that the landlord will serve the apartment building, because perhaps the tenant didn't notify the landlord correctly. The landlord will evict an empty apartment building, and then the tenant still has an eviction on their record. So we work as part of the Tenant Law Center to help people with previous evictions, try to conceal them or try to otherwise repair their, you know, tenant rental history. Because they can't find apartments now. And I have one tenant who received a payer vacate notice, thought, oh god, I can't pay, so she believed it meant vacate, and she just left. And then she moved to another place, and again, fell behind on rent and got a payer vacate notice and thought, oh god, I can't pay, and so she left. And what she did not know, because she did not properly notify her landlord, but also it is a weird, scary. And what she did not know, because she did not properly notify her landlord, but also it is a weird, scary, like, legal process, was that they were going through the eviction proceedings in default against her empty apartment twice. So now this is a tenant who was homeless, who has two evictions on her record and cannot get into a house. Um and like, she thought she was following the rules, like, oh my god, vacate, right? That's what the notice says. You have this amount of days to pay or vacate. Back in the day, it used to be three. Um and so she said, okay, I guess I'll leave in three days' notice, which in and of itself is mind-blowing because I can't imagine moving everything I owned out of my apartment in three days. Um but because the legal process is inherently intimidating, because the legal process is inherently arcane, um if people don't respond correctly or they get a notice and they think it means, oh, I have to leave now, um there's all kinds of unknown consequences that can stem from that years and years down the line. And particularly if those notices stem from a two-hundred-dollar late fee, it's really worth just cutting that off in advance.
Right, that, that uh is very helpful, Devin. Thank you for explaining that. Just in the interest of time and because we've had already a lot of questions of, uh Councilmember Nelson, your, your Zoom hand is still up. So if you want to go ahead, please go ahead uh and ask your question. And then Council President Juarez, you had your hand up. So I was, I was thinking, uh, Councilmember Nelson, you're, you're shaking your head, so you don't have, yeah, okay. Thank you. Uh and yeah, a really helpful questions. We will definitely um uh make that part of the discussion going forward. President Juarez, you have your hand up. I'll uh
I did.
And make sure you go ahead. And then Kate, you also had your hand up, but, but Kate, I'll, I'll just have Kate close it out. And then, so Council President Juarez, you go, you go first.
Oh, thank you. Um I just, I just want to make a comment that on the contracting piece, there will never become a time where, and and it should in a real world, in a perfect world, where you will have equality between a tenant and a landlord. It should be that way, but it isn't that way. Simply by the fact of private property and land, that's a whole nother discussion. So I want to get back to what Devin was saying, what we've heard. Um that we know that these kind of contracts are, contract law is governed by state law and landlord tenant is also governed by state law. So what I want to get back to is some of the, what you had listed in that one slide deck, that um some of these issues in a contract, they, they will always have, as I said, some inequality. But what gets offensive when there's such disproportionate inequality is when it becomes offensive, obscene and unconscionable and against public policy. So I want to focus on that, on those issues for public policy that this city can look at and say, this is beyond the pale in a contract for a tenant to agree to this in a rental agreement. And so why it's important for me to say that is that, as Councilmember Nelson pointed out and in the, and Madam Chair stated as well, I want to see the other side of the ledger, if you will, I think that was the word you used, or the other side of the equation. If indeed, these fees are kind of, could be imposed, are imposed, I wa- I would like to hear from a landlord, property or whatever, say um, and say, you know, do you impose this, these fees, not, not, not City Light, not SP, all these other city departments that impose fees when there's late fees, when people don't pay their bills on time, but you as an individual are going to impose a fee for water, gas, garbage, all these things that, you know, that those are your, that's not your, um, you don't own those things. Um so why are you imposing a fee on that? And so maybe the landlord comes back or whomever, property person comes back and says, well, you know, I own ten properties and the reason why I do that is because when the land, when the tenant doesn't pay, then I have to pay. And if I have to pay, then that comes out of my pocket. And and that's okay too, but I just, I want to know what the other side of that is. And so I, I do agree with what um, what Madam Chair said. Um this is a opportunity for um, for landlords and other folks to come forward and say, well, let me show you. I don't think it's, and I don't want to be um rude or anything, but I think it's kind of, you know, um, a bit glib to say, well, if you're not doing anything wrong, then you have nothing to worry about. That, that's not an answer for me. So I'm going to leave it at that. And I'm guessing we'll have more discussion. I'll also talk to Madam Chair offline. Um so that's why I'm inclined to be supportive when I have a little bit more information. But I do agree that are, just from the list that you did, that some of those things are just, are, are truly on their face, prima facie, as we would say, unconscionable and against public policy. And because we're in the realm of housing and rental and the disproportionate amount of power we have, I believe City Council has the power to, whether it's a ten-dollar cap or a percentage or a five, whatever number we can talk about, that we're hoping that you come back. And I'm sure Madam Chair will, will make sure of that. Um to give us that other side and some more information so we can make um and have a, a really good um professional, kind, uh dutiful, um respectful debate about this. So, that's it.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, and and just on, on the, on the question of, you know, if you're a good landlord, you don't have to worry. It's not meant to be glib. As a matter of fact, we have heard from landlords, you know, small landlords who don't engage in this kind of punitive uh approach to their tenants who do support uh the rights of their tenants and who agree that the tenants are not there to be exploited. Uh and so it's coming from that spirit, but I also agree with you that uh we, which is why we are having this initial discussion. And I'm happy all these questions have come up because, you know, that allows us to look into all of this and make sure that uh we are taking those points of view into consideration. And I'm happy to hear that you are, you know, you're inclined to, uh you know, understand what, what this, how this actually puts a burden on the tenant. So that is uh very much appreciated. Uh Kate, did you want to sort of give a closing remark, so to say, from your side?
Um there was just one more thing that I wanted to add, that Devin pointed out that you can't be evicted for late fees. Um but unless it's like explicitly clear that whatever payments that you were making to the landlord go towards your rent. Um if you uh say get caught up quickly, but don't have the spare money for the late fees immediately, um if the landlord chooses to apply the money that you gave them for the next month to your late fees instead of to your rent, um then you're late on rent again. So it can become this like very quickly uh building cycle uh and and people have been known to take advantage of that.
So, so you mean that it does result in eviction proceedings or, or at least a threat of eviction?
So if your rent was two thousand dollars and uh you fell behind, but you were able to get caught up and you gave your landlord a check the next month, let's say for four thousand dollars, and they applied whatever the late fees were, four hundred dollars to that and removed it, now you're four hundred dollars short for the next month. Unless it's explicit that it is for rent only and not to be used for fees, which most tenants do not know how to convey that information, or there's not a way to do it online if they are trying to pay for, through the portal. As Devin pointed out, they might even get locked out completely.
Right. Thank you. Ted, 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 were you looking to add something? Devin, did you want to add something before we close for today?
No, I think Kate said it well, yeah. I mean, there's, there's plenty of ways where if you're attempting to pay just your rent full, but you missed a late fee, um the money gets put towards the wrong, you know, bucket of charges. Um and if you don't pay rent full, then yes, they can move for eviction.
Right. Um thank you. Uh so, thank you all so much, Devin and Kate, um for coming and presenting in the State Health, State Healthy Coalition and also council members, particularly Councilmember Nelson and President Juarez. Thank you for engaging in this discussion and we will make sure to take uh many of the questions that came up today and the points that, you know, to, to have a fuller discussion when we uh maybe have a more concrete discussion related to the legislation. Uh and as I said, it's not going to happen at, soonest mid-February, maybe late February. So we'll see when the committee meeting is. President Juarez, go ahead.
Is there, and I, we could probably do it quickly with our own staff, but do you think that you could have your staff send us what, what the Auburn um
Yes, yes.
Law looks like? I would love to see that.
Absolutely, that's, that's in my uh
Is that in your head already? Okay, good.
No, no, you're, you're No, I, I have, I totally appreciate you reminding me, but I was just showing you that I, that was in my mental to-do list after the questions came up, that we should absolutely uh share that information. And if it helps for your uh offices, staffs, both of your offices staff to have a meeting with uh Ted and somebody else in my office, that, that's also, we're totally happy to set that up. But we'll send whatever information we can.
Always a pleasure to meet with Ted.
And can we, when, um, when will you get a draft of the uh legislation that you're working on, just so that we can know more precisely what you're thinking?
Um so you're welcome to uh check with Asha to see if she
You did.
She's doing the drafting, but um the uh, what Asha's told us is that the, just in terms of the timing, is that drafting the legislation doesn't take a long time, but the city attorney's office is ju- just has a backlog of things to look at. So to, waiting till mid-February is because that's when they will be able to do, begin and complete their review of this legislation. So um so it all depends on if you want it before or after it goes through the city attorney's office's review.
That would be helpful, thanks.
Okay, we'll, we'll definitely um share it with you once it's ready. Uh thank you all and um I'm looking forward to our um next discussion. Appreciate uh everyone, unless there is anything else for the good of the order, then
Better chair.
Juarez, go ahead.
When do we meet again? Do you know? Because I want to be out of town in February. That's what I'm worried about.
February seventeenth is our next meeting. Are you out of town then?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm in Washington DC.
We can, we're flexible, so we can see if there's another date that works for you and uh the other members of the committee, then we're happy to reschedule. So let's, let's talk about it offline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you and thank you for the heads up. So it's uh ten fifty-one AM. The meeting of the Sustainability and Renters Rights Committee will be adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a rest, good rest of the day.
Thank you. Thank you, Devin.
Recording stopped.